Okay. Good morning and welcome to the Blue Earth County Board of Commissioners meeting of September 27, 2022. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance to the flag.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The agenda review.
Mr. Chair, there are no changes to the agenda today.
We move to approve.
Yep. Approve?
I'll second.
I'll second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carries. All right. Here we have the sheriff's office and Mr. Paul Barta. Several different items. And I'll start out at first item.
You can join us up here if you want, Paul.
Yeah, come on up.
Come on up.
Up here. First item of the agenda is the public hearing regarding the Blue Earth County Sheriff's Office body worn camera policy. And this is a public hearing, so public comments will be allowed in just a moment. At this time, I'll just ask Captain Barta to please introduce item before the board.
Good morning, Board. Appreciate the opportunity to meet with all of you again. Give you a real brief, I guess, overview on what we're looking at, the project scope, and where we're looking at coming in financially on the project. The body worn camera project was researched pretty extensively. We put a work group together that consisted of several different individuals from the patrol setting, IT. I was part of it when I was able to make some of the meetings. We basically looked at the top contenders that we felt were in the market, including Motorola, which is watch guard, Axon, which was formerly known as Taser, and G-Tech. Those were the top three candidates after research that we wanted to look at. We met with the vendors and we ultimately did a demo or took the camera hardware onsite and tested it in controlled circumstances. We tested Motorola and Axon, and ultimately the work group decided that Motorola was their preferred option. They said that it integrated with the existing squad camera system that we have. The video itself was more similar to what the naked eye would see and would lend itself to what really was happening at the time when the video footage was taken. There was flat rate pricing, which was a little bit more easy to understand and apply to our situation than its competitor. And we had local representation, so if we have issues with a product, we have a local connection here to be able to go back to them. Real quick breakdown on the numbers. We're looking at about 31 devices to get the project off the ground. That's going to accommodate 22 patrol staff or deputies and lieutenants, three investigators, three for the drug task force, and then we want to maintain three spares that could also be rotated through for administrative use. For instance, if I was going to go into a situation with the advantages for me to have, I'd be able to grab one of those spares. Real quick discussion on the budget. When I initially looked at this project and got some rough numbers a year or two ago, we had budgeted $100,000 and looked at with most of these, this type of technology, oftentimes it's a lease style agreement. We did budget out for $100,022, maintenance costs for 23 and 24, and then in 2025 had $50,000 budgeted, knowing we were going to have some integration enhancement requirements to keep it going with our existing squad camera system. And real quick, remember that the squads have video cameras in them and the ideal circumstance is that the body worn camera links with that video so that it's a seamless integration and they work together. You're not dealing with two separate systems, if you will. So for the board's consideration, our total amount that we were actually looking at upon implementation went to $132,393. And again, I would be looking at the budget coming up in 2025 to make maybe some correction in that $50,000 because I don't know that it's necessarily going to be needed. But that's going to get the project up and off the ground and run it basically at a maintenance style agreement for about five years. So total cost is a little more than what we budgeted for, but that's the reason. Any questions on, I guess, the overview before I move to the policy piece of it?
When would it start?
Good question, Commissioner. We're looking at, talking with Motorola, one thing that they're seeing, of course, is delays in product availability. And we're hoping that we can get the product, and we think we can get the product according to them in 2022 yet. We want to make payment, obviously, in 2022. Implementation time, I think conservatively, we'd be probably looking at January, hopefully, or an optimistic would be December. But I think we're going to see the beginning of 2023 to get it up and running.
Thank you. Public hearing.
Anything else? It's a public hearing, so Kevin, have a question?
I guess, also based on when we start, we would not start it until we have a complete system, correct?
Correct, yeah.
So everybody would be, would all be ready to go before we started.
Correct, yeah. We would have the, as defined in policy, all of the equipment on hand. Incidentally, too, the provider, the vendor in this case comes, leave onsite and does training. If not onsite, they do it remote. So there's a training component to go along with this that has to be conducted for all the staff. And there's IT-related component, too, to make sure that we've got all the integration. It's cloud-based, but there's that evidence component of it so that it's stored and the files can be exchanged for prosecution and for other law enforcement agencies and things. So there's a little bit of behind-the-scenes work that needs to go on as well.
Any other questions, Paul, at this point? Okay. Thank you, Captain Barta, for that. At this time, we will open a hearing for public comment. Those individuals wishing to make comment may do so at this time. Just come, please come to the podium and state your name and address for the record. And please limit your comments to three minutes. We have to go through this? Okay. Is there anyone else wishing to make comments on the sheriff's office body worn camera policy? Please come forward and state your name and address. Again, last time, for anyone wishing to make comments on sheriff's office body worn cameras policy, please come forward. Okay. I guess, hearing no further comments. We will close the public comment portion of the hearing. And state statute requires a comment period, but no board action is required at this point. All right.
And if.
Second item?
Yeah, if I could, real quick, Chair, I'd just like to pass along that I will be having a conversation at the conclusion of this meeting to let the vendor know that we intend to proceed with the purchase. And following that, then they will send an invoice that will probably come to county administrator yourself for review and possible signature electronically.
Okay. Thank you, Paul.
I would move the Motorola Solutions quote.
I would second that.
I move in second. Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carries. All right. At this time, we have.
Grant authorization.
Board, yeah, board discussion yet? Okay. And we're moving on to the next item then.
And I think, Chair, you're referring to the resolution for the TZD, the Towards Zero Death DWI Officer Resolution. And for the board's consideration, this is a standard agreement that has been in place for several years, specifically the TZD, that initiative to provide additional traffic enforcement on our roadways. And this specifically also applies to the DWI officer position, which allows us to keep up somebody out there enforcing DWI laws for the traffic enforcement. We've used it over the last several years, and we use the money to backfill the staffing position that somebody vacates when they go into the enforcement component.
Good for that. Are any other comments from the board?
We'll do. Continue with the resolution.
Yeah.
Second.
Second, move in second to continue the resolution. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carries. That's it? Thank you.
Thank you, Paul.
Thank you, Captain Barta, for presenting today.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Move on to planning and zoning. All right.
Morning, Garrett, Scott.
Morning, Garrett, Scott. Just the next item on the agenda is planning and zoning. And planning and zoning staff are here to present their action items. This is a public hearing, and public comment will be allowed in just a moment. I'd ask the planning and zoning staff to please introduce themselves for the record and introduce item to the board.
Thank you, Commissioners. My name is Garrett Rolfing with Blue Earth County Planning and Zoning with Property Environmental Resources. PC 20-22 is a request from Mitchell Frondinst and Kyle Kelly for preliminary and final plat of the Kelly subdivision. The plat will include one lot and one outlot. The property is zoned agricultural and is located in the east half of the northwest quarter of the southwest quarter and the southwest quarter of the southwest quarter of Section 2 Judson Township. Staff presented the report. There was no public comment. Members of the planning commission indicated the report was thorough and well thought out. They had no further questions or concerns. Following the discussion, the planning commission voted to forward a recommendation for approval of the request to the county board based on the findings prepared by staff and with conditions recommended by staff. And the board action is the passage of the resolution based on findings and conditions recommended by the planning commission. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Garrett. At this point. Is there anyone wishing to comment on PC 20-22? Again, if there's anybody wishing to comment on PC 20-22. Again, we'll ask if there's anybody wishing to comment on PC 22. If not, we will close the public comment portion and bring it back to the board.
I would move approval of the resolution based on the findings and conditions recommended by the planning commission.
Second. I move in second. Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carries. Then we have, moving on. So you're going to take Scott with PC 21-22?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Scott Dallasbury, Blue Earth County Property Environmental Resources. The next item is PC 21-22. The applicant is the Cato Cycle Club and Minnesota Paving and Materials. And it's a conditional use permit to review and update the mining reclamation plan for the former Cedar Grove Mine, which is located in the southeast quarter of Section 31 South Bend Township. The updated reclamation plan includes site grading to establish a minimum of three to one slopes and establishing vegetation with a dry prairie seed mix in the areas of the former mine that were mined after 1997. At the planning commission meeting, staff presented the staff report. There was no public comment on it. Members of the planning commission indicated that the report and plans were thorough and added that it is good to see the site being reclaimed. They had no further questions or concerns. And following discussion, the planning commission voted to forward a recommendation for approval of the request to the county board based on the findings prepared by staff and with the conditions recommended by staff. The board action is passage of the resolution based on the findings and conditions recommended by the planning commission.
Thank you, Scott. Okay. At this time, if there are anybody wishing to comment on 21-22, please come forward to the podium and state your name and address. And if there's anybody wishing to comment on PC 21-22, please come forward to the podium. I guess for the last time, then, if there's anybody wishing to comment on PC 21-22, please come forward. And hearing, we'll bring it back to the board for discussion.
I would move to approve the resolution based on the findings and conditions.
I would second that.
Second, Vance. Any discussion?
Seems like a pretty good idea. I saw.
Yeah, a lot of positive comments at the planning zoning board, moving this forward.
Yeah, a lot of positive replanting and it's good to do.
All right. Can we have it in front of us, then? All those in favor, I say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carries. Okay, concludes our hearing. Thank you, gentlemen. We have, yes.
Good morning, John.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Ms. Lake, how are you?
I'm doing well.
Good. Introduce your item.
Yes, I just wanted to see which memo we had up there first. Good morning, Commissioners. I have two items for you today, two memos, both of which are appointments to the Community Corrections Advisory Board. So the first one on your screen there is the appointment of Mohammed Al-Sadig. Mohammed is the Executive Director of the Greater Man Cato Diversity Council. Excuse me, this appointment would run through the rest of the current term of appointments, which goes until 12/31/2023, and would be subject to reappointment thereafter. So he is a replacement. He will be a professional member, replacing Bukata Hayes, who had previously been on the board with us. So that is the first appointment. And I could go right to the second one unless you had any.
Well, let's go one at a time.
One at a time.
I would move to approve Mohammed Al-Sadig to the Community Corrections Advisory Board.
Second? Second?
I'll second.
Okay, Julianne, second. Okay, any discussion?
I know Mohammed personally. I was, when I was on advisory board, he was on there. He was also a part-time police officer, well-versed, and he'll do a great job with the Community Corrections Advisory Board.
It was great to meet him. We got to spend some time together a couple weeks ago. And yeah, just getting into his role as Executive Director, he had a lot to kind of get figured out and situated, so we were able to finally connect. And he is excited to get on the board as well. He's been looking forward to it, so I'm happy to bring him on board.
Great. Okay. Thank you. Anybody got the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carries. All right.
And then my other appointment to the advisory board is Habibah Rashid. Habibah, the same term would apply to her. Her term would expire on 12/31/2023 and would be subject to reappointment thereafter. She's actually going to come on board as a community member. Habibah is actually the Associate Director of Refugee Services for the Minnesota Council of Churches. And so she and I had met, we had been connected. She'd been recommended to me by a couple people as well as a potential candidate to join the board. And so we were able to connect and spend some time together. And I just talked to her about what kind of role she wanted to fill as either a professional member or as a community member. And so after, you know, talking about what we do with the advisory board, she thought that she wanted to come on board as a community member. So she's in Commissioner District 3, and she, like I said, will be on the board until 12/31/2023 and be subject to reappointment thereafter. But really excited to bring her on board as well. She has a lot of interest in working with our families and the community, and so I think she's a perfect fit for where we want to be at with the Community Corrections Advisory Board as well.
All right. Thank you, John. Okay, we have a motion?
I would move to approve.
We're moved. Second?
Second.
Second. Okay, discussion? Sounds like a good choice.
Absolutely.
All those in favor, say by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carries. Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
See you tomorrow.
Sounds good.
All right. Next, we have Craig.
Drainage. Good morning.
Good morning, gentlemen. Yes, we have.
First thing we have here is on Judicial Ditch 15. It's the hearing date. Purpose, the Blue Earth County Judicial Ditch 15 is a public drainage system, which is primarily located in Lincoln Township. Petition to make alterations to JD 15 was received in July 26, 2022. Charles J. Brandl of ISG was asked to review the petition and to make a report. At today's meeting, the Blue Earth County Drainage Authority, we are requesting the Drainage Authority set a hearing date of October 25, 2022, at 9:00 a.m. in the second floor, Board of Commissioners room at the Blue Earth County Courthouse.
Is there a, this is right at harvest time. Is there a reason why we got to move this forward in October, or can this get pushed? I mean, Kevin, you getting any feedback from this particular one? I'm getting.
Not on this one, yeah. 86, I'm hearing. It's, you know, the last two years, we've had four rain days. We've had as many as 15 rain days back in 2016 where we couldn't harvest. So if we can pick it on a day that's raining, that would be great.
Is that just an issue though, moving these? I mean, I know we normally try to do that before, but.
We want to be timely and efficient and get that. But we also, I think, want to be respectful of the busy season on the farm.
And I don't know how big a project this one is, to be honest with you, but 86 was kind of a big project. But we're dealing with that. So is this a pretty minor?
This is, should be pretty minor. Should be, the plans look good.
Okay.
Yeah, should be pretty minor. Only affects like one landowner.
Okay. I'm okay with that, but as we move forward with these bigger projects, you know, chances are, we've been working on them for two years anyways. What's another month going to matter if we're going to pass harvest or planting? So let's keep that in the back of our, back of our planning.
Yep. This project actually is going to be a wetland restoration.
Oh, it is?
Yep. No, agricultural.
Okay.
You foresee a lot of issues or?
No, just, they have to reroute the line to make sure that the upstream landowners are deprived of any drainage. That's, that's the only thing that we're really concerned about.
Okay. In that case, I would make a motion to set the date for October 25.
Get moves to make the.
Second.
Okay, and Kevin, seconds. A further discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carries. Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen.
I got a repair report for.
That's right, we have that.
You can wait till we're done.
You guys already prelude the CD 86, County Ditch 86. Have a quick repair report for that. For Section 34 of Decoria Township, there's areas of multiple sloughing and outlet repairs that need to be done. I did receive an approximate cost estimate of $18,000 to $20,000 from Sowers Construction for the dirt, dirt work and all the repairs.
Move to approve. I move by Kevin. Second by Vance.
Brian, I'm, Mr. Chair, do we have on here how much is in the accounts anymore?
I don't have that.
Oh, okay.
Nope.
All right. Are we okay in that account, you remember?
Yeah, CD 86 is a good size system.
All right.
Yep.
The only question I have.
Cover it. Okay.
I can email you if the.
No, it's okay. I'm just curious if they have enough money.
All right. Any other questions? Okay, all those then in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carries.
Thank you, Gary. Have a good day.
Thank you.
All right. And I guess we have at this point.
Mr. Claussen.
Mr. Claussen, Phil?
Morning, Phil.
Human Services. Good morning.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, I have three action items to review with the board this morning. The first of those being in the public health realm, and it is statewide health improvement partnership that I think the board is familiar with, SHIP, as it's most often referred to. This is a renewal of our agreement. SHIP supports evidence-based solutions. The areas of focus are active living, healthy eating, tobacco-free living, and general well-being across four sectors, including the community, healthcare environment, workplace, and schools. We, as you are familiar, award many grants. We, as you are familiar, award many grants, which are also reviewed by the state. And the renewal amount of this grant is two hundred and eight thousand nine hundred, I mean, two hundred and eight thousand nine hundred and eight dollars, which is the same as the previous year. There is a note that we could use some of that previously for COVID and that ended now. And so it's back to pre-COVID practices. And the term November first of twenty-two through October thirty-first of twenty-three. The other two items are under financial assistance. First of those being with Americare Mobility Van, AMV. It's a temporary funding source to provide our critical transportation services to fee-for-service clients. And these payments mirror the payments by managed care organizations. So managed care can already reimburse these transportation providers in this way. But for fee-for-service medical assistance recipients, they do not get this extra support. And things are very tight right now in the transportation world. We, our providers were really down to two outside providers beyond Vine. And I am very concerned that we could lose either one of our remaining providers. We're using ARPA dollars for this to help cover no-load miles, no-shows and wait times for AMV. And we also have a conversation going on with Blue Earth Taxi. So we'll talk about that vendor in the future. These are all, again, allowable reimbursements for managed care plans as we stand today. Purpose is to assure sustainability of the provider. The amount is thirty-three thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. Contract, current base contract runs January first of twenty-two through December thirty-first of twenty-two. And this addendum will be from September one, backdated a bit through the end of the year, December thirty-one of twenty-two. And finally, our MFIP DWP contracts with MRCI, a lot of acronyms. Minnesota Family Investment Program is MFIP, our base support for individuals. And under that, if people do receive assistance, there are expectations for employment services. And there's also another program called the Visionary Work Program that actually comes first. So most people that apply are put on DWP. And they really look for a job right out of the box and see if we can avoid them going onto the more extensive MFIP program. Once they're on MFIP, there continues to be employment service expectations. And MRCI is our provider and has been for many years in this regard. Let's see, the funding comes from the consolidated grant, which is a very big grant that supplies a lot of our supports. And the employment service carve-out for 2023 is six hundred and forty-one thousand eight hundred and thirty dollars. And that's an increase of sixteen hundred dollars, so very small increase, point two-five percent. Term, January first of twenty-three through December thirty-first of twenty-three. And those are my action items, Mr. Chair.
Questions? The, I was wondering like the mobility one, so like COVID a part of it? It's been, it's been kind of a problem for a while to get providers for.
Yeah, it's been a very, much of a reality check, Mr. Chair, in that I think the providers have both kind of gone out of that space because the margins are so small. And then what we saw during COVID, to the heart of your question, people started to clamp down on how far they would transport somebody. So the Rochester Mayo visits went by the wayside, which caused a lot of hardship. We can always, I mean, if these providers would decide that they're not going to continue, we offer gas cards and other things, but sometimes people don't have that. They don't have family members near. So those are the kind of headaches that we experienced, especially during COVID, to the heart of your question. And some providers just refuse to provide trips during those times for fear of safety about the virus.
Okay. Anybody else? Any other question? All right.
I would move approve all the action items.
Motion approve the action items or second?
Second.
Second by Vance. Okay. All right, and all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Pose carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. I do have some informational and discussion items of focus today. Again, things that we've brought before the board historically. The first of those being child protection data for the past year for twenty-one. You'll see the first pie chart and the breakdown of the different types of maltreatment that we, we find. Neglect being the vast majority, which these are fairly stable pictures that we see. Or neglect being our number one concern, followed by the physical abuse, sexual abuse, and then some smaller categories in mental health or threatening of injury. The interventions break down in kind of the square box. And the different types of assessment we do, our first one, family assessment, the biggest one. The kind of concept behind family assessment is we try to come alongside the families. It's a, it's a relationship that we're trying to build. And it fits with the majority of our cases, but there are some exceptions. And so anytime physical abuse or sexual abuse is, is reported, it immediately goes to that next level of family investigation. So a little less of a mutual approach, but more of a technical look and a court-involved look at what's going on in that household. And then if abuse happens in a facility, that can, sometimes we will investigate depending on what facility and how they're licensed, or the state might, might also investigate those, those reports. And then you'll see the final statistic is we do a good job of getting out. That's an important part of our, our business and our reputation, our integrity for child protection staff to meet the required timeline. There's quite a bit of, of room with the family assessment when something isn't urgent or emergent necessarily. It's very true, we don't know what we don't know. So sometimes we go in and realize it's much worse and you can move it to then the family investigation. And that does happen once we find out some information. So it's not like you're locked into a certain approach. And then twenty-four hours if it's the more significant concerns. And so therefore, I think the board's aware that we have twenty-four hour recording. We, you know, don't shut down on the weekends. Staff are on call. Law enforcement's a great partner for us. County attorney for sure. So things are going well. Again, I think when you look back, it's hard to not look through the lens of COVID. And I think that shifted an awful lot of things. And some of our concern, which we've talked about here, is people are kind of maybe more sequestered in their house. So you don't know what's going on. Once school starts, we get a lot more reports, a lot more eyes on. And for the mission, that's a good thing. The second area is out-of-home placement. And just to break down what types of placement in this, in this picture that we're providing, also twenty-twenty-one data, so there are some skews and effects of COVID in all of this. As well as, and you've heard me talk about just how hard it is to place children, especially children with high levels of need. It's true on the adult side right now too. So we're, we're in a real struggle about finding beds. So I'm trying to paint a fair picture for you, but literally staff are calling a hundred calls a day just trying to find an open bed in any state. It's really that bad. And so we were talking to Patty O'Connor yesterday and just telling her kind of the lay of the land of what's happening and this being a hot topic for sure. And just that, we've always said, you know, there's acute cases. It takes a big toll on staff and we have hard cases, hard to find the right bed. It feels worse than ever, I must say. It just, it seems like it's really, really a crisis. And so we're talking to DHS about this. I'm sure we'll try to bring light to this through the next ledge session as well.
That's, that's a problem, not just here.
Correct. This is across the state.
Absolutely.
The crisis centers across the state are just.
Absolutely right.
Every county in the states.
Yeah, if anything, and I think it's always fair to say, you know, Mancito being a hub, we have a lot more resources than some of our neighbors. And so, yeah, it's, it's a crisis throughout the state for sure. And if anything, we have at least some step downs. We have the crisis center. We have some stuff where some counties, small counties, don't have anything. And they're, they're making the same calls. When we get together as a region, that's what the directors talk about. It's just that their staff are, you know, all day long just trying to make calls, finding desperation calls, really willing to take any place. Because of the acute presentation, the kid's in crisis, the kid's not stable, and he's really at risk of hurting themselves or others, or their behavior is out of control. It's not, you know, the unusual customary adolescent little blip. It's not that stuff that we're talking about. Breakdown of where kids go in this snapshot. The first pie chart just shows the cause, the reason for entering care. And always that use of drugs and alcohol is the biggest category. The next, which kind of fits with some of the child protection data, is abuse or neglect. So we're not confident that the kids are being given enough structure to have a healthy day-to-day. And then we go on to behavior issues, mental health. And, and that, again, is a pretty stable breakdown of what we see year to year. I'm going to go to placement expenditure percentage, the biggest category, foster care, which I always promote, and I know you do as well, that our foster care providers are bread and butter. It's how we provide our mission. It's the core of it. And it's the vast majority of our placements, which I'm very proud of. I hope that would never change. Group homes is kind of the opposite story where they tend to have longer length of stays. And so we've tried to use that as minimally as possible. We do use it once in a while and when somebody needs a longer-term placement in the family. Situation does not look like it's going to improve. A group home might be warranted. But followed by residential treatment and then correction facilities, which are kind of split for the rest of that pie. Let's see, and finally, numbers and reasons for children exiting out of care. So the opposite of the reason entering. A good news is the vast majority go back with their parents. That also is part of our mission. That's our, our charge is to try to make families work. And adoption is another really important piece of that pie. I've been talking to Bob that we've had some slow delays through the state. We've done our, our parts are really prescribed as far as when we have to get our paperwork in and how much time we have to keep these adoptions moving. And it's a very high priority for us. And the language and statute is a little looser with the state. It's like when they can get to it. That's a problem, yeah. And it's heart-wrenching just because of, you can imagine, from the parent perspective, the child perspective of how painful that can be when somebody's just sitting waiting for this really good thing to happen. And so that one, we're going to also put some pressure on and leverage that a bit. I mean, you'll see the breakdown of the rest of the reasons why kids exit. Forty-two percent of our children are placed with relatives. In child protection, in these areas of placement, we are measured in a very detailed way. And we, if we don't make certain measurements, we're put on pit plans right now. We're not on one, which is a really good thing about staff's performance. But we do need to hit our timelines and relative care, putting that as a priority is one of the measurements that, and I certainly support that, as do our staff, is we're first thinking, can you stay with family? And that's the number one question. Forty-two percent of the time, we're able to find that, which is really good. Sometimes families out of state, it takes a lot of coordination to get that to happen. And sometimes we can't locate them, which is another problem. And do you wait and hope you're going to locate them or do you just move down a different road? And so those are, those are harder calls for staff and especially for Ann Rosco, who runs our, our unit. That's what I have for today, Mr. Chair and Commissioners.
Wonderful. Thank you, Phil. Anybody have any other, other items?
Just to follow up back to the shortage of beds, I mean, that, that's a bricks and mortar issue? Or is it a management issue? Or, I mean, how do, statewide, how are they going to deal with it?
Right. So forevermore, the metaphor, and I mean, I first heard when I came from Bob and Dennis, but the pendulum swinging. So that's how I talk about these beds. And there was a time, and you guys have heard it, where things were institutionalized. You all, I think, know I have a son who has Down syndrome. Henry would have been born, shipped out to the state hospital. That's not that many years ago. That's like sixty years ago. He would have been shipped out. That's where he would have grown up. And so things have changed dramatically from that place, the pendulum swinging. Then we got to the point where the state put a high priority, which I agree with, of course clinically, on saying if somebody's in a hospital level of care and doesn't need that level of care, we better get them out. So there's a huge push about that. The problem is you push them out and they still need help or they struggle and their condition or their presentation deteriorates. And there's no bed available because we've just cleared out the beds and reduced our size and scope of what we have accessible in that acute, that most acute place. That's the current status, is we, we've taken a philosophy, Commissioner Brunder, where I think we've pushed it to the point where we've emptied out our hospitals and beds. And it is a bricks and mortar answer. But you and I both know how long it would take to build new hospitals and new beds or having hospitals willingly say, I'm going to trade med-surg beds for psychiatric beds. It's, it's not the easiest business to be in. And so there's business problems, there's bricks and mortar problems now. And I think the pendulum has just swung way too far so that we're, we're just hanging out there in desperation calls to other states, hoping we can find something. So that's the status. What you're raising is my biggest heartache, is we can't just fix it. And like legislatively, from an elective perspective, I would love to say, please send this message and let's get this done. Well, it probably is building more beds. I mean, I think that is what is going to be.
Then will staffing be an issue on top of that?
Yeah, and the workforce. Oh, my goodness, yes. And that's already being talked about. And that's why some of these providers don't want to get in the business because you can't find the staff. So you could build the building and they won't come. You know, they won't fill it. The staff won't come. Yeah, so, so yeah, this, this workforce thing might be the root of it. Bricks and mortars are absolutely where we're at. We just don't have the beds. And repurchasing would be the only quicker move. And I don't think people want to be in the business. That, that's kind of the status. And it's a real tough dilemma.
So you're trying then, talking about going to other states?
Oh, and we do, Commissioner. We really have done that, especially with really hard to serve. I look at Commissioner Strumberg, is that if somebody has a developmental disability and behaviors, that's a really hard placement because they'll disrupt the whole facility they're in. And so to find that perfect fit, we've gone to, yeah, Missouri, Iowa, the Dakotas for sure. And that's already happened. And we're grateful when we can find that. We're so happy. And it's cost a lot of money. Our budget is not in a great place. But it also has mitigated the budget a little bit by the fact that we can't find any beds. So, you know, it's, it could be a lot more if we had to spend these high dollars in other areas. But one of the business problems, we can't even find the beds. So the costs are mitigated a little bit by that.
So where does that person end up then?
Well, it's really difficult because in that case that I was talking about with the parent, and this is the heart-wrenching part, is they're almost always with mom and dad still. And there's usually behaviors that also include physical harm, meaning that, you know, hitting and other things that are going on in the home that we know it's acute. We know they need a placement, they need to save a place. And so mom and dad have to put up with those things. In the mental health realm and the adult realm, which is just as bad, by the way, they sit in the ED. And so you can imagine that Mayo has something to say about that. And you guys know that we're trying to work on buildings and bridges and churn things and be creative. I mean, the other thing like the crisis center is just a godsend for us that we have such a thing because at least you could buy some time. So crisis center, ED, those are really our only choices. And, and then state hospital when we can. And I, I would say, again, we have good relationships, which do matter, where you sometimes say, hey, we have this need. And boy, I'll tell you, Horizon as a provider will move people around in their system to try to make a bed for us when we ask. So I'm very grateful for that, but it's not, you know, the best, you know, to beg, borrow, and steal. It's a tough road. Thank you.
Yeah, I appreciate your report.
Well, thank you for your support. And I do pass that along. I know you guys do care about these issues and ask about them and, and share them. I think the most we can do is talk about it. And we've taken every advantage with DHS to try to state our case here that it's a crisis and we need help. And we'll do the same when ledge session rolls around too, so.
Do you feel like DHS has been receptive to what you're trying to say?
They have. One of the hardest things, again, I was talking with Bob and Patty O'Connor about this yesterday, is that I, I think the attitude and the relationships are, are good in that way, but they're very short-term, meaning that, like I was at a meeting about case management redesign. And it's been going on for years. It's a big deal. The whole team from DHS has turned over. When I went to this last meeting, not one person had been on this and the county reps have been on for literally two or three years, working on this big, like, redesign project. And so that's what we're facing would be my answer, is that I think it's not an attitude or a personality problem or a philosophical disconnect. It's much more that there's been so much change and churn in the department that we. It's much more that there's been so much change and churn in the department that we don't have sometimes the ability to call up some of the people we know and say, look, here's this conversation. I don't think they really even have that perspective that our board does about the degree of this problem. And so you start back where I think it's going to take a while before they really are like, oh, this is... Like, when you guys ask your questions and say, wait, wait, that's really bad. And it's like, yeah, it's really bad. And they don't know what really bad is, because they're new. And so that's how I feel about some of that. And that goes all the way up to the top leadership. What's that?
Yeah, all the way up to the top.
Yeah, oh, yeah. It's Assistant Commissioner for sure, all the way up to there. Thank you, guys, for tuning in. Good to see you.
Thank you, Phil.
Yep. All right.
Mr. Chair, first item under administration is the County Boardman, that's for September thirteenth.
Move to approve.
Advance, minutes, or a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Good carries, then. All right.
Next are the bills for the two weeks indicated.
Okay. And the bills?
I'll move the bills.
I'll second them.
Second?
I've got a...
All right.
I've got a couple of construction stuff in here that I think people will be interested in to see what kind of money we're spending on construction. Holtmeyer Construction for six hundred and twenty-seven thousand.
That looks to be a bridge project.
Okay. You know what bridge? Or don't we?
I don't... I can't interpret this. They put their project number on here, but I'm not sure which one it is.
Math was construction for seven hundred and twenty-three thousand. I'm thinking County Road One, but...
That is County Road One.
Okay. OMG Midwest for one million, one hundred and sixty-one thousand.
Overlays.
That overlays.
Probably. That is County Road Twelve.
Oh.
Okay. R and E Enterprises, one million, six hundred and twenty-three thousand.
That is County Road Eleven.
Okay.
Looks like County Road Seven.
Okay. And then the last one, I got City of Mankato Construction Projects, two hundred and sixty-eight thousand, but then there's consultants and waivered services and stuff.
County Road Sixty. So that's the county share of that to the City of Mankato. And then we have some transportation and water fees making up the rest of it.
That's it. Thank you.
All right. Anybody else have any questions? And bills? Okay. Motion?
We got a motion and a second, right?
I think we do, don't we?
Yep.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries?
Right. Mr. Chair and Commissioners, I have number eleven in your packet, is the Human Resources Department Agenda. Do have one action item for the board's consideration today, and that is authorization to initiate recruitment for a social worker in our disability services area. This is the position that was talked about at a recent work session by Human Services to work in partnership with Mayo Health Systems, to do assessment work, to help move people through the system, get that assessment work done, to figure out services that someone that's been admitted to the hospital might need in order to leave the hospital and return home or to another rehab type of facility. I will tell the board that we've been having conversations with Mayo around contract in order for them to pay the portion of these positions that are not covered by reimbursements through state and federal sources. That contract is not complete at this time, although we do believe we'll be able to work through the remaining issues. So we're asking for authorization at this point, but I would hold the requisition until we have confirmation that that contract has been fully vetted.
Okay. So you still... We still need to move that?
We would ask for the board to authorize recruitment, so that when the contract portion is complete, then we can move ahead quickly with the recruitment.
Is there a motion?
I move approval for the disability services worker.
And move. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Julianne? Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carries?
Under informational items, the first item there is a little bit unusual. It's a change of employment status from a full-time 911 telecommuter, telecommunications to a temporary on-call position. This individual has left our employment, or was planning to leave our employment, but indicated a willingness to work some part-time on-call hours. And so we decided to move forward with this temporary position, so that we have some extra capacity as we do further recruitments. We are a little short in our dispatch center, and so that flexibility of this temporary on-call was viewed positively. We have begun initiation to recruit a new 911 telecommunications, so we're hoping to get back to full staff soon. We had a completion of employment of a correctional officer, and so we've initiated recruitment to refill that position. We also had a resignation of a clerical specialist, too, in our community corrections department, and have initiated recruitment to refill that position. We had a resignation in our facilities department, so we've initiated recruitment to refill that position. Then we also had a resignation of a correctional officer in our jail, so we've initiated recruitment to refill that position. Then there is a promotion of an Assistant County Attorney Two to County Attorney Division Chief position, so we've initiated recruitment to refill that Assistant County Attorney position. We have filled a library clerk, a part-time position in the library, as well as filling a property and environmental resources specialist position. We have hired an additional correctional officer in the jail. We've hired a social worker in our disability services area. We've also filled an Assistant County Attorney One position in the county attorney's office, and then filled a clerical specialist one position in our human services area. So continues to be an active time for our human resources folks. Be happy to answer any questions that the board might have?
Anybody have questions, or Bob? All right.
All right. Mr. Chair and Commissioners, I have number twelve in your packet, is a resolution as required by Minnesota statute, certifying proposed 2023 property tax levy. As the board is aware, staff began working on the budget in April of this year. We've had meetings with department heads that were held in June, and then we've continued with work sessions with the county board throughout the summer, resulting in a proposed levy of forty-two million, nine hundred and seventy-nine thousand, one hundred and seventy-eight dollars. This proposed levy is a six percent increase over the levy that was assessed in 2022. We are seeing increased pressure on our labor markets. We've also seen increased service demands, leading to increased staffing needs, as well as inflationary impacts that have hit some of our operational cost areas. So all those things have combined to lead to that levy recommendation. So at this time, I'm recommending the 2023 proposed property tax levy of forty-two million, nine hundred and seventy-nine thousand, one hundred and seventy-eight be certified to the Blue Earth County Finance Director.
I would move to approve.
Vance moves a proposed levy?
Second.
Second by Kip. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair, I don't have any questions or comments, but Bob already alluded to the time and energy that was put into coming up with this levy. I just want to mention that again, of the work sessions that we had discussed this budget and setting this levy, and hearing from the appraiser's office, and Mark Manderfield and Michael bringing in projections on how this would affect other people or people in their homes. So I appreciate all that work that the staff put into it.
Would you say that, yeah, in lieu of all the pressures and so forth, and inflation and all, it's a... Everyone says it's a fair amount, but it's a... It's necessary, so. All right. Any further questions? And I guess all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carries?
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, I am number thirteen, is a resolution on the proposed 2023 budget. Minnesota Statute 375A.06 does require the county administrator to prepare and submit an annual budget and long-range capital expenditure program to the county board. As I mentioned previously, staff have been working on this proposed budget since April of this year, and has been reviewed numerous times in county board work sessions. As such, I'm recommending the approval of a resolution regarding the 2023 proposed budget, which projects expenditures at one hundred and nineteen million, six hundred and forty-eight thousand, five hundred and eighty-three dollars. I would also point out that the public hearing to discuss the budget will be held on December thirteenth of this year at 6:00 PM here at the historic courthouse.
Move to approve. And move by Kevin. Your second?
Second.
Second by Vance. Discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carries?
Item number fourteen in your packet, then, is a temporary liquor license. This is local brewing company has proposed this application for a one-day to four-day temporary on-sale liquor license. I believe it is a one-day event on October first, out at the Poor Farm Studios. I will point out that this application was received late in the process. We have no way of guaranteeing that the state of Minnesota will process this license in time, but we indicated to the applicant that we would bring it forward to the board and forward it on to the state, in the hope that it is received by Saturday.
Okay.
I move approval.
And move by Kip. Your second?
A second.
Second by Julianne? Okay. Any further discussion? Yes, we'll go forward. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carries? All right. Guess that concludes your report, and you have the Commissioner report. So let's just go with Julianne all the way down.
Yeah. Last Wednesday, I went to the RITA meeting, that's Regional Economic Development Alliance, with Mankato, the greater Mankato area, as well as surrounding counties. And it was a review of what they've been going over the last year, couple of years, of their strategy has been less, same as, you know, attracting business, but also focusing on talent recruitment, and making this a better place for people to move to out of the metro area and move to this area. So it was very encouraging, and I think that they're seeing a lot of really positive benefits coming out of that alliance. And I think it's great that we're part of that. And as someone who moved to the area a year ago, I see that that was... I sat there and felt like, wow, you know, I didn't even know that what was attracting me to this area was a strategy coming out of RITA. So that's really encouraging. That is the end of my report.
Okay. Thank you, Julianne. Great. Kip?
All right, Mr. Chair. After our last board meeting, we had a conference call with MICA, and we went through the agenda relatively quickly. Nothing really new to add, getting schooled up for the election, and we will be meeting in person next month. We were supposed to do it last month, but something came up with some conferences, so we did it via Zoom. But next month, we'll be in person. Then I had my self-central workforce meeting. Everything's going pretty well there, nothing really new to add. Obviously, like everyone else, they are having no problems trying to find jobs for people. MVAC meeting, we also had our full board meeting. Nothing really new to report there. Activities are going very well. We did... We are getting audited for the program that JUD runs, because we gave away the money relatively quickly, but everything has been going really well with that. The auditors have been working with the staff and been able to answer all their questions. We had the work session, which we had several different items on the agenda, and had a busy day that day. It was good to hear from all those people. And then I had my statewide emergency communication board. Nothing really new to report there. Things are moving along fairly well. And then this morning, we had our new employee orientation. That's my report, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Thank you, Kip. And let's go with Kevin.
Okay. Since the September thirteenth board meeting, attended AMC Fall Policy Conference on the fourteenth through the seventeenth. Had good general sessions on tax assessment and the kind of elections update. Blue Earth County was represented well by Michael Stahlberger, who was on the panel for that. He did a great job. We heard from the Lieutenant Governor, Dr. Jensen, his upcoming candidates, their environmental and natural resources policy committee met both in the afternoon and in the morning on the last day, as we're moving through those processes. On the nineteenth of September, they had a call with the Army Corps of Engineers concerning the Rapid Ant Dam. The work session on the eleventh, on the twenty-second, we had a Lissour, One Watershed, One Plan Policy Committee meeting. As we're moving through that process, the group committee decided to go with a collaboration as we looked towards administrator, fiscal agent at the next meeting. In the afternoon in Mankato, I attended a kind of a town hall meeting on rural ambulances and some concerns with EMS pre-hospital. That was attended by folks all over, just kind of as an example of how big a deal this is. The lady that sat beside me is from Hoyt Lakes. She traveled down from Hoyt Lakes to be part of that. That evening was the Blue Earth County Township Officers' meeting. Probably the one thing to note from that meeting is they've changed their December meeting to December first, which will be at 6:30 in Mapleton. So that is a date change to December first. On the twenty-third, the Gavurba, Greater Blue Earth River Basin Authority Policy Committee had our meeting. And then on the twenty-sixth, the Rural Minnesota Energy Board, we met for our quarterly meeting. And with everybody else, new employee orientation this morning. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Kevin. Vance?
Well, I also was at the AMC Ledge Conference. And being on the transportation, we had a lot of talks concerning EV vehicles and how they will affect... lot of talks concerning EV vehicles and how they will affect issues on the road and money coming in because of gas tax and stuff like that. Also, the vehicle miles traveled, we talked a lot about those. I was able to squeeze in a call to the NACO Rural Action Caucus while I was up there and because that was their monthly call-in. The next week, I also had the call with the Rapid安Dam, with Commissioner Papp and the Army Corps of Engineers. And then we had our work session on the 20th, and I flew off to Washington DC for the Transportation Alliance flying. We had meetings with Betty McCollum's office, Senator Smith's office, Representative Emmer's office, Representative Finsted, and Senator Klobuchar's office. So we, we had a busy day when we were there. I also had a meeting with the Transportation and Rural Action Caucus person on Thursday in reference to where we're going to hold the Rural Action Caucus Symposium in '23, and Blue Earth County is right up there. So it's nothing, nothing set in wood yet or in stone, and things could change, but that's, that's our, that's our goal at this time. And I had my, the new employees orientation this morning, so that's it for me.
Okay, thanks, Vance. Can I go back then to my report, All Seasons Arena on September 16th, the Friday? Yeah, we're obviously discussions there, you might have seen some news on that. Got a little dealing with financing of our ice and the upkeep of our All Seasons Arena. Obviously, it's important to skaters and hockey, hockey groups, so we'll keep moving on that. Yeah, just interesting with, I guess you see how joint powers agreement comes along. There's a little glitches to it, I guess. Then we have, we did have a work session on Tuesday, the 20th. Wednesday, I did go to the RITA Annual Meeting, and that's usually at Gustavus and St. Peter. Actually, they have President Inch from MSU gave a little talk there. Then Thursday, had the county attorney at the Senior Expo. I guess I glued myself in the senior, senior group, so that was good. And that was at Community Center or the, right next door here. And then had a Partners for Housing Board meeting that evening, and we are, with that, we are in the process of finding a new director for the board. And so last few days, we've actually been in online and one in person, but mostly online, a number of candidates, and we're going through those, and let's see, we went down to the, to the one candidate, and then, let's see, we did have, yeah, new employee orientation this morning, and then we had our board meetings. So that concludes my report. So there's no other business?
I would move to recess.
Kip moves to recess. Your second? My second by Kevin. Okay, all those in favor saying aye.
Aye.
Carries. Recessed. Good job, Mr. Chair.